What time is it?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Okay. And thank you for being here. I don't know if Russ is going to come in on this or not, but he did say he was hung up. Um. So we wanted to have a final meeting because if we can move this ARPA funding off to the Board of Finance, that would be great, you know, just the requests. But the two things are, one, which I will go back to, is the Connecticut Community Foundation, and I did send you all that, but I have another extra one here. It's, you know, saying what it is for. I think it's $3,000 well spent. So I just gave you the updated list. I thought it would print in color and it didn't, so I'm sorry. But the one that I sent the other day, there is an error and it was going down under supportive local and regional nonprofits that serve the town of Roxbury. There's the other friends and the counseling and that, but one of them was the, where is it? The C, Town of Roxbury Items and its Senior Center Camera Laptop Screen for the Senior Learning Network. Actually, we already have the screen that we bought with the Steve Grant.
Oh, that's why the number went from forty five.
And we also have the camera. So it's the laptop and this software for the Senior Learning Network, which is something that we have talked about with Linda and actually with Jennifer beforehand because they have it over in Woodbury. And so we are using it and I think that we need to keep it up. Um, so I mean, it's a subscription, not software. So that changed from forty five thousand to five thousand. And so that changes all the numbers going down on the left. So the totals now, so supporting the public health response. And that is support of our local public health district, the services. They need a whole upgrade over there with their computers and, you know, they'd like to get a couple of laptops. But Kim, what else did she say? Donna or?
She did not give any, yeah, Donna Culver, or the Health Director, the Executive Director of the Health District. She did not give me any more information than that they need upgrading of their computer stuff. And she was gonna send, yeah, I was hoping it was gonna come today, you know, the price of what one computer would cost and then how many they needed, but it, but to me, I thought, you know, it was, it was significant, the upgrade they're looking for. So what I told her, I said, you'd have to get us a quote. Yeah, you have to get us something in writing.
So is this enough, that fifteen thousand, significant?
Yeah, I think so. I, it's the number that, that she gave me.
Yep. Um, I, because in the beginning, I was looking at one computer, the whole thing for one person, and now it's really moving out into the health district. It's like, well, if you can help us, this would be great. So, you know, this is a number that's out there. I would like to know, like, the town of Newtown, are they gonna help with some of it?
I was wondering, is there, you know, I mean, how many towns are there and are they also gonna chip in?
It's Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Newtown. And I think they should also.
If, yeah, it should be fair.
So yes, I saw Donna and she was gonna send me something.
She was here, she was here all day yesterday.
Yes, and I'm sorry that I don't have that.
But she said, you know, I don't have it for you, but I will, I will get it to you as soon as I can.
So it's not gonna be any more than that?
Yes.
Right.
So then the expenses for the acquisition and distribution of medical and protective supplies, durable medical equipment, and the countywide radios for emergency services for the Emergency Management Director, Fire Department, and Ambulance. So breaking that down, it's a hundred and five thousand. Breaking it down would be, for the ambulance, we talked about the striker, the stretcher, and ten defibrillators for, and that was forty five thousand. And then the statewide digital radio system is sixty. So that's how we get the hundred and five over there.
And is that after they met?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I asked them. I said, I would only put it on if all three agreed, and they said, yes. That's correct, Todd, right? I see you on here. He's muted. I know.
Yep, that's correct.
Got it. Thank you, Todd.
Okay, then the support of local and regional nonprofits that serve the town. We have sixty five thousand listed there. So under that, it was emergency services and organizations that support emergency services. So under, for Fire Department, for thirty thousand dollars in revenue loss. And then there are services to address behavioral health, et cetera. It's Greenwood's Counseling and Litchfield Hills Chore Service. And those are five thousand each. So that's how we get to, I'm sorry, where's the other thirty? Oh. The Friends of the Senior Center, Friends of the Library, the Land Trust, and the Chappelle River. Those are all listed there. Good grief, I was my mouth here.
So let me just say one thing about the nonprofits, and that is.
Right.
That's right.
Yep.
Got it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, so these, these estimates, these are estimates that we came up with through various meetings, Board of Finance and such discussing. But in order, you know, this is federal money and we need to offer to all nonprofits, you know, the, the opportunity to apply for this type of funding. And it's the nonprofits that support the Town of Roxbury directly or regional. So, so the, so the, so the, so the application process is gonna be out there for all of them. So even though these are the ones that we are most passionate about and want to help, they may or may not get, they may get more, they may get less. It's just these, these numbers are the estimates we came up with. There are, there is a process, you know, you do have to, you do have to file an application, especially when there's revenue loss, there's a formula they're gonna have to follow, guidelines, assurances. There are, there are strings attached to it, you know, we just can't give people money without them understanding what they're getting into and, and how they have to report it and how they have to use the funds. So so that's all I want to say about it. So it's, you know, it's sixty five thousand dollars. Hopefully we can have it turn out the way we want it to here, but, but it does have to be offered to all nonprofits that support the town regionally or directly, so.
So with the Fire Department and the revenue loss, and the revenue loss was supposed to be fifteen thousand over two years. What was with that? It was like you might not be able to go back two years.
No, it's, it's, it's not, it's not that much different than the formula that the town was gonna have to use to show revenue loss. So, so while you, while you can go backwards to, I believe, the, I think it's January twenty seventh, twenty twenty, kind of the start of the pandemic. And then forward over a certain period of time, certain years. And then the spending of that money has to go forward from there. You can't, you can't go backwards and then say, well, we spent it on this and we're trying to replace the revenue that we lost because of it. The spending has to be forward, forward through, starting with March of twenty twenty one, when the ARPA legislation was signed into law. So, so you can definitely show in, in the, in arrears. And it's a, it's a simple formula. There's a GFOA calculator, revenue calculator out there that makes the process fairly simple, but you have to be, but you have to go forward with the spending of the money when it, when you come up with what your loss of revenue is.
So will the Connecticut Foundation be managed, like, if we agree, right, that they would manage that process and help with that formula and do that type of thing as well?
Yeah, yeah, that would all, all that information would be provided to the applicant.
From them.
From them, correct.
With most of these, they need to show what the money is going to and all that. Well, with the loss of the revenue for that thirty thousand, that was literally just going into their general fund.
Well, no, that, that is ineligible. You just can't show you've lost revenue and then commit in your coffers and say, thank you very much.
So how are they gonna justify that spending? They're gonna have to find something to.
They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to show how they're gonna spend this money going forward. So that's gonna be from their pot of money that they have to spend before everything else.
Good.
And, and that's what they're gonna report into the, you know, and this is all the sub recipients, all the nonprofits. So for a simple example, the Friends of the Library, they were not able to have their fundraisers because of COVID, so they show a loss of revenue, but we wanna show going forward, okay, so if we give you this money, how are you gonna spend it? Well, we're gonna give, we're gonna be able to give more money to the library to help support the programs at the library or support the Senior Center programs, you know, through the Friends of the Senior Center or with the Fire Department, whatever their, their general obligations are, you know, expenditures, whatever. And that, and, but it has to be going forward. The spending has to be going forward. But the showing the revenue loss can, can be done in arrears, obviously, starting in, I believe, January twenty twenty. They, they just came out on Friday with new reporting guidelines. So because they had extended the, the reporting for us, our, our, our period now goes from March of twenty twenty one to March of twenty twenty two. And then I have a month after that to report, so it'll be an annual reporting and accounting. That's due April, April thirtieth of each year going forward.
Until the funds are gone.
Until the funds are extended, so.
So the funds that we have already, we get received half.
We received half, yes.
So we have to come up with a definite plan. The Board of Finance will probably, will have that final say. But then we can start spending it.
Right, these are the general categories and we need to vote on how we're gonna parse this money out, and this is kind of what this represents. And then, and then we're going to go to the Board of Finance and because a lot of this is capital nature, these, these expenditures, they'll have to be added to our capital plan and, and voted on at a town meeting, you know, it'll all have to be publicized and done that way. So we have, you know, we still have to follow our general rules here. So when we have, even though this is a separate pot of money, we still have to go through town meeting and, and all of that in order to.
Are we gonna have enough window to open this up to other applicants? I mean, we're losing a window here because we're looking at doing this by January of having a town meeting.
Um. You know, it, it, it all depends on how quickly you wanna get this money out there. Especially when you're talking about nonprofits and stuff. You know, it's, it's a short window, yes, but, but we do, but we do have to allow for time to set this up. I'm gonna have to set up with the Connecticut Community Foundation, the guidelines. We have, I think I was talking to Kim today about a, a kind of a boilerplate set of guidelines from another town. And, and they're fairly simple, but they're pretty specific and very self-explanatory, you know. The, the government wants us to give this money out and, and they don't want it to be bureaucracy of red tape, but still there are strings attached to it. So.
So once the Connecticut Founda, or Community, Connecticut Community Foundation gets the go-ahead.
Right.
And things are running in tandem then, is that true? Then, so the town has to go through its process and
Yeah.
the town meeting and whatnot, and at the same time, the Community Foundation is.
We will be saying, I will work with them and we will get this all set up, you know, we'll be using their computer portals, but it will all be modified towards the ARPA funding process.
Have we had any interest from other organizations?
Um, no, no one that has come forward.
Just wondering.
No, but, but we do have to publicize it. That is really, really important.
Yep.
Has to be on the website, you know, I think you've probably seen in the newspaper, newspaper, other towns that have unveiled their plan for their ARPA funds, you know, you, you, the federal government wants to see that. And, and, and it really is in our best interest to follow that.
So really, I mean, we can keep going through this, but if, if we wanted to move some of this money that we have, you know, earmarked for stormwater infrastructure, three hundred and seventy-three, and the sixty-five is only for what we've chosen. If someone does come forward after it's advertised, you'd have to bump that number up, if in fact, or somebody out. But, you know, I mean, this thing, it's, it's, it's not totally set in stone. I mean, we gotta be able to move these numbers around as those things come in.
Right.
And the unknown here, and I'm gonna ask Jimmy to join us in a second about this, the broadband infrastructure, because I did have him look into a different way of getting that broadband over to the Senior Center, which, again, this, it would never be higher than this number, but it could be a lot lower than this number.
Because it did go up from, yeah, it went up from fifty-five. I noticed that, yeah.
Right, there, there is some flexibility, you know, the government recognizes that. And we will be able to move the things around and, you know, even though we, we vote on it this way, we'll be able to vote on it in a, in a way that will allow us a flexibility within, within this budget, if you will, within this pool of.
So can we move ahead with what we have projected and then adjust it after the fact?
Yeah.
Okay.
But Jim, you wanna weigh in here?
What's up?
You wanna weigh in here on the, the broadband for the Senior Center?
Yeah, I had a conversation with Daryl. And he's, I, I, I think we left off after our conversation, once Patrick's in, probably sit down with Patrick, Daryl and I, and talk about options, have us look at everything and proceed, eat, kind of what you just said. It, it won't be more than running actual fiber itself. He can probably save us some money, but we have to sit down and talk to him.
Right, because I have the one Board of Finance meetings Andy Engel brought up, that you can use, what, to?
A transmitter.
Beam me up.
Yeah, a transmitter, like a laser transmitter.
Right.
From, as long as it's visual sight.
Right.
From the school.
To the senior center.
To the senior center, which would be a drastic reduction in price, so.
Right. I mean, there were some uncertainties with some people who have had that, you know, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but, I mean, this is a direct line.
Yeah.
I think it would probably be to our benefit to look at that.
Yeah, Daryl, Daryl was pretty confident and
Yeah.
it'll work, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, so then we, we left it up to, well, then, you know what, y'all should meet. We can leave that number in and it could be taken out or drastically reduced. And that, whatever the balance is, could go back into not the nonprofit line, if that's something that you wanted to do. And then, or, and that's probably where it would go, because I'm confident it's gonna come down, because I think this is gonna work, just in the little bit that I know about it. And then investing in the stormwater infrastructure, I'm just throwing those numbers out, except for Botsford Hill, they did, they did request twenty nine thousand from, from the town to go towards that.
And whose they?
Oh, the HVA. Who's, who's Sonic Valley?
Authority.
Authority. They are doing, they are working on that grant for us, for Botsford Hill. And it's the HVA's proposal, it's asking for some ARPA funds for the replacement of the Culver. And so they're saying the total replacement cost that they're coming up with is two eighty-nine.
For Botsford Hill?
Yeah, two eighty-nine, one sixty-one, and they're asking for twenty-eight, nine, sixteen, which is, I'm sorry. The ARPA request is twenty-eight, nine, one, six. I rounded it up. And so if they got that, they would be going for the grant for about two sixty. The town could throw more in, actually.
If I recall, when we put it went from six something down to two something.
Yeah. Well, you know, I mean, sometimes, yeah, it's overkill on the engineering. I, I have to, however, that was a different engineer and the current engineer that did look at it, not HVA, they said that the actual culvert is in good shape. It's the, it's the sides, it's the head walls and everything that are caving in.
Somebody's gotta step up. If you're gonna replace the sides and the head walls, those twin pipes gotta come out too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause they're, they're the biggest.
No, they're looking, and they are looking to do those pipes also, because the HVA is only concerned about the fish and the flow, the fish flow. So I would, you know, give you this. It's the aquatic habitat connectivity.
Oh, yes.
Stormwater runoff and flood mitigation, and flood mitigation actually absolutely happens at this culver.
Oh, yeah.
This should be.
Twin pipes, nice big log comes across the, the plug.
Yeah.
And anyway, okay, I was just curious.
But they have their own people that are working on this.
Great.
And I have the whole thing right here and I'm happy to, you know.
Yeah.
Sure. Are we gonna, is it gonna get done for the next fifty years or done for the next ten?
Well, because they are looking, and they already did try to go for grants. Again, things are drying, drying up, not to be a pun, but.
It's crazy, it's one in all of our.
I know, but that was, that was before. And now, I, I think if we have extra money that could be used for stormwater, it should be gone, it should go into this one. Especially at this cost, and then they're standing by.
Who came up with the Squire Road number?
Oh, I just threw money in there because I had to find a place for it. I, I just, just, and I shouldn't have put it in miscellaneous or into Botsford. I was just said, after adding up all of these, I had to just divvy up three hundred and seventy-three thousand.
And still with that, although they're looking for the twenty-nine thousand now, even if we get a grant, we're looking at fifty percent of the two eighty-five that we still have to come up with.
Right.
So that number should be added to as well, because in order to complete that, we're getting fifty percent of the two eighty-five.
But you know what? The problem is, we did go out, we tried to get the local bridge program money for that, and it was not in bad enough shape, which cardinal verified. So I will. No. No.
Oh, so for two something, we're getting a box culvert plus the sides?
Well, you know what, now, I don't know as of today, because everything, it's, um, this is an aluminum box culvert.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's fourteen, which we just bought a huge.
Yeah, yeah, galvanized.
Yeah, so.
That's, that's how much I think it's worth. Fourteen thousand, yeah. I just think it's good enough to last. I don't know. It's up to you guys.
Well, again.
It's aluminum, yeah.
And you could do more research and move these numbers around. I know, and it's like, how do we get this finalized? But it doesn't have to be final, final.
I agree, yeah. We just gotta throw some, a little plan together. It's kind of like the housing thing. You just gotta plan. You don't have to implement it, you gotta have a plan.
I think because this is all under the same heading, investing in stormwater infrastructure.
It doesn't matter how it gets to.
Doesn't really matter, as long as.
And that's what I was just gonna say, like, oh, and if it was in color, like the original was, it's supporting the public health response. That's, that's, the total is two hundred and twenty-five thousand. How it gets divvied up, these were just suggestions.
Exactly.
So investing in the broadband, that's the one that can change. And and that could be thrown into either category, seventy-five. There it is. And then, but, so to just be working, you know, two prongs working at the same time, what I would like is for us to vote on moving forward with the Connecticut Community Foundation so that she can get started working with them.
I agree. I agree.
And so, do you wanna make a motion for that, Jim?
Yes, I will make a motion that we acquire the services of Connecticut Community
Foundation.
Foundation to oversee the application process of our
ARPA funding.
ARPA funds.
Yep.
Second.
Hey, Russ, in the amount of three thousand dollars. Second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was that an aye, Russ?
Aye. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I, I think.
All right, so can we just get this signed and get that going? Could you?
Yes.
Yeah. So, since this really is the last meeting of this board, Russ thinks I'm gonna keep going to Christmas with special meetings. You know, at the December, at your December meeting, which is, I think, December sixth, December sixth. You know, we, we can still meet and work on this and in the meantime, talk with Jimmy or whatever. And then you can finalize this to bring to the Board of Finance. Or we give it to the Board of Finance and say, these things can absolutely be juggled around. These are just the heading, the headings, supporting public health. These are our suggestions, but these are not set in stone.
So the Board of Finance would take it up after Kim and Patrick looked at it in December versus taking it up next week in November. Yeah. And I would like to see Kim and Patrick have their shot with this in December and then go to Board of Finance in the December meeting. Only because we've been talking about this for four or five months with the Board of Finance. Yeah. I would actually say the reverse. I would push this ahead. If we have to modify it, we can, but let's get the ball rolling. Let's have some sketch numbers in it. That's what you want. That we have to move ahead, because if we're gonna have to open this up, I think we need to get a community involvement bulletin out. You know, some kind of posting out almost immediately, because I would love to put this to bed. You know, at least January, we need to have our preliminary documents. So, you know, although we can always adjust it, I think moving ahead right now, we're running out of our window. We've been talking about this in July, literally.
What did you mention? What did you say the window for this was?
I thought it wasn't carved in stone. It is, according to the new legislation that expires, or that brought that extension to April of twenty-two, but that's your reporting. We're supposed to still have numbers by January, the end of January of two thousand and twenty-two. So I'm looking at it as
This really short.
As, you know, we have the month of December before bringing it to Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, if we have any adjustments.
Oh, yeah, no.
No, it's on April. April is, is her finalized reporting, correct? If I, if I read all of it.
Right, and our, and our, and our time period is through March.
She's thinking, oh, no, I, I, I think.
Yeah.
I agree.
I think the January twenty-two date is for the bigger cities than on, more, more than any.
And I know it was the, uh, uh, major cities under two hundred and fifty thousand and all that, but I feel like we still should at some point.
I, I agree.
Okay.
Do it sooner than later.
Cause you're making the decision right now. Yeah.
So I wouldn't have to.
I just, I was, I read in today's paper where towns are rushing. The town of Kent bought a park bench. Okay, and they had letters to the editors like saying, we can't be doing this with that money. We're rushing into spending it for the sake of spending. We're rushing into spending it for the sake of spending it, and they bought a park bench in Kent. It was in today's Waterbury.
I think you guys have done a great job on this.
Yes.
Well, I think, I think that's one of the reasons that they extended the reporting period. Um, there's a period in which you can, uh, use it, because people were feeling rushed. Hurry up and use it. I mean, they, they want you to, they want, they want it to be done.
Sharon is just forming their committee this evening as we sit here, town of Sharon. The Board of Selectmen is forming a committee within the community to tell them how to spend the money tonight. It was in today's paper.
Right, but we, we definitely need to, you need to get out that communication, yes, cause we, um, part of the, uh, CCF proposal is a committee of three people from a community to serve as the.
Liaison.
As, as relay, the, the liaison.
So we were talking about that, I mean, so can it not be the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Um, it could be, it, it could be, but I, I think.
But Russ?
We, we represent the people, don't we?
Yes.
Okay. I have two questions.
But, but can I, can I just, can I just add to that? Um, they, they suggest in the proposal that we have three members from the community, serve as the committee that, that, that looks at all of this. And they make no decisions, they will make recommendations to you all, and then you all have the final say. But, but, but they're gonna do the legwork.
But I look at it as us going to the Board of Finance to make these approvals on these decisions. Um, it's barely, merely, uh, a three-person committee, it's just an oversight, working with the auditor.
Working with the Connecticut Community Foundation, yep. Right, you want, you wanna have some impartiality, because, because you all will be able, you will be making those other decisions. So, um, so th- this is their recommendation, I guess we could talk to them about it.
I don't see, um, you know, if it's not the full board, it certainly should be one member from the board.
It could, it's certainly could.
Should be the first selectman.
I agree.
But, but if we need a three-person out-of-selectment board, I vote for Barbara and Jim. And Kim.
Retired.
Kim, not, not. Not Kim Tester, Kim Yu.
Oh, Kim.
Oh, no, 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 I, I will respectfully decline, I just.
All right, I, I'm just, I, I think it should be Barbara and Jim and a third person.
Well, it's gonna be Patrick and two others.
All right, well, Patrick, you and Jim, great.
Well, you know what, I mean, it might not be bad to just get some fresh blood in here.
In other words.
If they could find it.
Well, I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can find somebody, uh, you know, we put it out there.
We can talk about, I mean, you suggested someone, we could, we can talk about that after.
Yeah.
And it's not to make any, it's not to make any necessary decisions, because we're gonna push ultimate, uh, decision on these. This is just a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Finance, who's gonna vote on it. So then, there's just really an oversight to make sure that we're working with community foundation, to make sure that money is spent, allocated directly, that, uh, it's accountable at the end of the day.
It's all accounted for.
Yeah, so I mean, I look at it as not necessarily we're, uh, cause I think we've already gotten a lot of community input, you know, over all the meetings we've had basically since July.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was just, it's a formality, but.
Yes.
You're gonna have to document, we're gonna have to document that this is the process, this is what happened.
Correct.
Yep.
One, two, three, four.
And then, all of these different organizations are gonna have to file.
Yes.
Their own.
They all have to apply.
Yep.
Even the ones that were, everybody has to apply, and they will find out exactly how to go about that process after Kim works with the Connecticut Community Foundation.
All right, I have, I have a question, and I'm sorry I joined late, but such is, such a job life. And Patrick, I'm impressed with you doing your homework, and I'm really looking forward to working with you. We're gonna be a great board, we really are. Um, and you're showing me that already, for crying out loud. Anyway, um, what's important to me on two things, and I'm sorry again, I'm late, is that we give five thousand dollars to the land trust, because under COVID, they've been under a lot of pressure, and had to, like, they're upgrading a, a parking lot, they built a new bridge, I mean, very important. I wanna make sure that's still in there, I don't, I don't know that I.
It is.
Okay, and my second one is the Shepug Valley Association, I wanna under, I want you to understand that. We, we as a town have an obligation to watch Waterbury. And three or, three or four months ago, I, I raised my hand to take over for, for Edwin to, uh, to do that. And, and to be better at how we spend money to do that, cause we're, I, I think we're spending money that we didn't need to, but I, I'm hoping that five thousand dollars is still in there too.
It is.
Because, okay.
I sent the draft out, um, to everybody before this meeting, but it is.
I didn't, I didn't know if it survived this meeting.
Oh.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll shut up now, thank you.
No, I mean, you're, you're, you're asking the great questions. What I would like to do, because Jim and I can vote on this, if that's what you wanna do, to move it forward. But would you like to shift some of these numbers around? Actually, and Russ can vote, I keep forgetting, um.
Well, I, I think I like what you did, Barbara, and I think I, it's very understandable, and I like it, the way it's presented, um, but.
With the understanding that there are still some unknowns, and maybe you can shift them around.
Right, and I agree with Patrick, so, um, I'm kinda looking at all five of us, I guess. Um, sounds like we wanna move forward and you need to vote, and I'd be wanting to make a motion if that's what, with, with the five of us agree with.
Unless you think we should shift any numbers, no?
No, I, I, I agree with Patrick that.
I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make that motion.
That's your last one for this board.
You never know.
Yeah.
Second.
Second, all right, any more discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will hand this over to the next board, and then they can go with it. And I already have some things, you know, um, requests. However, they will still be given a, an application to, um, to apply for these funds.
So this will then now go to the Board of Finance?
Correct.
This will go to Andy and Dust.
Was to send it forward.
Correct.
But you're gonna have a say in what.
Cause they're gonna see it prior to their next, their meeting.
Yeah.
Yes. They're gonna see it next week.
Next week.
Correct.
Yep.
And Barbara, I wanna say that, I, I, it just goes to show who you are, to still be here, to do this, to end it, to finish up. I mean, basically, the last selectman meeting, you should have been flown to Florida and, uh, enjoying life. Um, you're dedicated to this town, and you're awesome, you really are. I, I just can't tell you how much I, I, I love you, really, for what you do for this town. And this isn't, this isn't an example, you don't need to be doing what you're doing right now. Um, but you've carried it to the end.
Amazing in this transition.
Yes.
Totally amazing.
Bravo, Barbara, thank you.
And transparent and very giving, so, thank you.
Hey, we all live here.
Shows what a great town we really are, really are.
I agree, great. Okay, we did have one other item on this agenda, uh, and thank you, Russ. But, um, and I won't have any more special meetings.
Really?
Replay, okay, so, Patrick and I have gone out to see, um, the Painter Hill Road Culvert, because that is the next one, and I did introduce him to, uh, Tim Zermola from Cardinal Engineering. We had a meeting here, went over, you know, um, what they've done for us in assessing our bridges and culverts so far, and what could be done. So I told him that we had decided to do the Painter Hill Road Culvert ourselves. And he said, you know, the preliminary design could be changed, because we didn't sign it to go forward with them, we were gonna just do this ourselves. Could be changed to show, um, a public works crew how to do it versus sending it out. Cause we told them, we're not gonna replace the head walls, um, we've come up with this different design, et cetera. But he brought up some, some points that we probably should rethink. And number one is, um, he said, you know, the head wall in something like this, with the amount of water that goes through this, is really to keep the, the pipe down, so that it doesn't, uh, come up in a storm, because the water is undermining underneath, which I didn't think of, and, um, but in speaking with the public works guys, you know, and Tim Zermola, but basically what we could do there is something that we still can do. However, Patrick, you can jump in, he was saying it might be to your benefit to let us design something for this bridge. Um, and you wanted to talk about it.
There were, there were some things I did, I've been, uh, meeting, uh, with the road crew, uh, every morning, uh, just so I can understand how this build, uh, is, and it basically extends, uh, the bridge itself. Therefore, there's more of a berm, there's going to be three pipes in total, uh, the one main galvanized pipe. And then because there are those two drains that come in from curtain drains, those will run parallel. Um, so there's about another hundred feet of drain that those tee into, so there will be in fact, three separate lines, uh, you know, light to light on both sides, so it's a clear opening.
Right.
It, it, the only other, other thing was, um, you know, putting a, a solid concrete base underneath, um, the head side of, the front side of, uh, of the bridge to prevent scoring. Um, that's again, something we can do, where we drop in solid concrete, so then you wouldn't have that undermining, we wouldn't have to worry about, um, that side of the, of the pipe. Um, although from, you know, the twenty or so that I've seen around town, none of them have it already. So, it's not something that we've ever really considered, I think it's a good idea, I think we both thought it was a good idea. Um, but I, I, I feel confident in the ability, looking at some of the other repairs and maintenance and, uh, things that we have done, uh, looking at East Farms, you know, some of the culverts that we've put in ourselves. Um, I was thoroughly impressed.
Yeah.
Uh, to be honest, and I know that, you know, saving the town, you know, uh, in excess of three hundred thousand dollars on the cheapest end of a bid, um, is, is worth our, our time to, you know, have our own employees do it. I'd like to keep it in-house.
Yeah.
Um, so that's just my recommendation that would, which would basically be covered by ARPA money, which is pretty exciting.
Let me understand this, we're not going to replace the head walls?
They're going to remove the head walls, Russ. We're gonna extend, extend the culverts, so then it's just, it just drops off on the sides.
And we put guardrails on?
Yes.
We would.
Yes, and so when we went out there and saw this, Patrick and I, um, he was thinking that we were gonna drill into this extended, large, um, culvert. But that isn't the case, cause it's gonna be two smaller ones on the side to take in the, um, the, the storm, the drains, those, and, um, and also alleviate some of it that's gonna be going through the pipe, because that's gonna tee in. We were gonna go out and look at that, Russ.
Yep, what about those, uh, pipes that you wanted to replace that we were going to look at?
That's.
Those, those are, that's, that's what we're talking about. So, um, there's one that's already, uh, uh, like a PVC, like a plastic pipe. Um, and then there's, uh, there's one that's galvanized, so that has to be pulled back.
And we're talking about Painter Hill, right?
Yes.
Yes.
On Painter Hill, okay.
And this is the east side of it.
Right.
So that's where you can come up with that, uh, black plastic tee, um, and I believe it's an eighteen-inch pipe. Um, and then it's gonna connect to that, so the tees are already included in the, uh, in the material list.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so, um, Patrick, you wanted to bring this back up again about possibly letting Cardinal design something for Painter Hill, do you still feel that way or no?
No, now, once I understood the tees, and I, I, I spend more time with it.
Yep.
I feel, I, I feel completely good, and, and if we can even drop, you know, this would be a first, um, but dropping some kind of solid concrete, um, just to eliminate that scoring and, and, and maybe a little bit of recommendation from you, Russ, if you think that's a good idea.
Can I vote for you again?
You're what?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, all right, so, uh, you know, honestly, if we had something like that, let's see how it works, so that as, as we move forward, maybe we can handle, you know, let's start with this, and then maybe some more aggressive ones. Obviously, Squire Road, um, because of the elevation, that, that pipe sits so low, uh, and there's such a drop-off on the south side. Uh, that's gonna require a lot more engineering, and you're not gonna be able to do the same kind of process.
I agree.
But you could do similar, because those walls get hit by trucks all the time. And to have the head walls repaired several times.
Worried about those walls, I really am. Those walls seem to be sagging to me. It, it would be a good idea.
And they are on Botsford too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it'd be a good idea to get rid of them and put guardrails there, I agree.
Yep.
Great idea.
Okay, I'm glad you see it that way, I, I thought the same too, uh, if they're just causing problems and they're just collapsing, you know, most of these are, are, you know, sixty, seventy years old.
And they're narrow, you know, just narrow.
Yeah.
Not only that, the, the storms we're having is so much more pressure on these things than what was in the past.
Yeah.
Yep.
Not, not to go for global warming, I agree with it, but not to the degree, some people do, but, it, storms have been rough, they really have.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I've even, I've even figured in, um, like rental of an excavator, you know, how much our labor hours are gonna be, what the fuel's gonna be, uh, for the trucks. I mean, we're still talking about hundreds of thousands of dollar reduction over having it engineered and done by an outsourced company, uh, and we're keeping it in-house.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
I mean, the guys wanted to just use the backhoe, and I said, no, we're gonna rent an excavator, so, um, it just.
Yeah, you need a, you need a bigger, you need a bigger piece of equipment, you definitely do.
Yeah, this pipe is, uh, uh, forty feet long, so it's just a lot. The reach isn't there, but it's also because we're gonna rip up the road, we want to be able to do it faster, and we, we're just gonna use an excavator.
Great idea, good job.
Okay, were you guys gonna talk about, um, Minor Bridge Road, or is that different, is that a different topic discussion?
No, um, it's different from Painter Hill, like what?
No, I, about, uh, going forward, is Cardinal, now, who's gonna do that work, is that?
They are, so they're the engineers, Cardinal, and it is gonna be put out to bid.
Okay, okay.
That's already drawn up.
Yeah.
Yes.
It already got out, so.
Right. Yep. And then, and they also did, um, the bid documents for Davenport, and that's already bid out. We're just now to wait for the, yes, for the culvert to come in, and so, there's gonna be a lot going on in the spring.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully, we can get Painter Hill done, um, if the weather stays like this.
I know.
And the pipe comes in.
Yay, global warming.
Yeah, no, there's still a big lead time on this pipe, so Painter Hill may have to wait.
Patrick and all that, and you, when you said forty-foot pipe.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, and the road is roughly eighteen, twenty.
Mm-hmm.
So you got ten feet of pipe on the west and east.
Exactly.
It's expanding the, to the length of it.
So is that gonna be all filled in?
Correct, correct, correct. So, it would be, you know, instead of a, a head wall, um, and then the pipes sticking out.
Coming down.
Yeah, we're gonna drain it down. Also, by extending the pipe, um, farther into the river, it actually brings the elevation up. So then it's closer to the road, we have less fill on the top, so it actually raised up the whole level of it. So it'll be higher on the low side, um, but there's less of a berm on that high side.
So it's gonna well, on either side, and, and then just guardrail it, so.
No, it sounds, I, you know, I always think of when they built these things sixty, seventy years ago, what was the reason for the, the parapets, the walls?
Right.
Did they serve a purpose that we're taking away?
Might have been just the engineering at the time, you know, what was expected.
Blame it on the Italians, we love Masonry.
Try to figure out a way.
The Lithuanians too. Well, but, but, um, you know what, there's probably less guardrail, and, um, the guardrail's gonna serve a good purpose here. These are, these are just, these are way more maintenance, you know, um, and especially with the salt and everything, and the, the, um, the cement that's in between these rocks, et cetera. Like I said, we've, we've done Squire Road several times, mostly because it's been hit, yeah.
The Apple Lane, one down past Ed's house in the valley.
Mm-hmm.
That never had walls, that was always guardrails.
Well, we redid, we pulled out, um, something on Bacon Road, took, took that all out, and it's, they did a really nice job with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, it just seems like all the, all the headwalls are just before Wheeler's Farm.
Just problems.
And you can see that's been hit.
They did a great job on Wiggly, uh, fixing that, I don't know, speak on out there, Russ, but, um.
Yeah, I did, they did an awesome job. And I wanna say that Todd, Todd is the best grader I've ever seen. I mean, this guy could grader road, unbelievable, Garnet Road has never been better.
He does, he does a great job.
Todd, he, he really is awesome.
They, one note on Wiggly, Russ, they are bringing, uh, a little bit more asphalt up there, it was only one truckload, they're gonna bring another truckload, because I think it could done, be done just a little bit nicer, finish it off.
Yeah, good idea, hard to find.
And they said they just, they'd only brought one truckload over, um, they're gonna bring another truckload over, load over and finish it off, because it's a little cheesy on the, on the finish coat.
Okay.
And I told them, put another post up, but.
Yeah, it's a little wide. Are closer together. Because he, when I was there that morning, he said, oh, this is, you know, it's the same, and I looked, I went, no, this is not the same, it was, that's why I kept.
And they were saying, well, it's for clean out, but you know what, they need to put another post in there. Or a chain across or something. Okay, anybody have anything else? No? Look for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? It's been great working with you guys.
Love you.
You're the best, Russ.
Thank you, Julie.
Welcome, good night, everybody.
You know what, I will get this to you in, um, colors. Or, wait a minute, I'm gonna send it to the Board of Finance, right?